Planning Commission meeting for February 23rd. To order, please. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Josh?
Here.
Kevin?
Here.
James?
Here.
Candy?
Here.
Tom?
Here.
Donnie?
Here.
An approval of tonight's agenda?
Motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Have a second. Motion second. Roll call, please.
Josh?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Candy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Donnie?
Yes.
And I need an approval of the January 23rd minutes. Make approval of the January 23rd minutes. Second. Roll call, please.
Tom?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Donnie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Candy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Donnie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Candy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Donnie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Candy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Donnie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Candy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Donnie?
Yes.
And I need an approval of the January 23rd minutes.
Make approval of the January 23rd minutes. Second. Roll call, please.
Tom?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Donnie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Candy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Donnie?
Yes.
An approval of tonight's agenda?
Motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Have a second. Motion second. Roll call, please.
Josh?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Candy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Donnie?
Yes.
And I need an approval of the January 23rd minutes. Make approval of the January 23rd minutes. Second. Roll call, please.
Tom?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Donnie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Candy? Yes.
I will open it up for comments from citizens, and this is for anything that's not on the agenda, so if you'd like to make comments, please come to the podium, state your name, address, and try to keep your comments to three minutes earliest. Anybody online? No old business? New business? We're going to move into the public hearing. I'm going to call the public hearing to order. First public hearing is on the rezone. The applicant is requesting a rezone from agricultural to residential estates. It's 2.89 acres located at 443 West Liberty Avenue. This time I'll open it up for the public to comment on this. Anybody online?
No.
Not seeing anything. I will close that item. Second item on the public hearing is a variance. Applicant is requesting a variance to Code 153 zoning regulations, Appendix B, minimum dimension standards, lot width minimum. This property is located at 706 Foster Lane. This time I'll open it up for item number two for the public. Anybody online? Nobody. I will close item number two. I'm going to adjourn the public hearing, and we are going to go into the Board of Zoning and Adjustments hearing. And we're going to look at the variance. Applicant is requesting a variance for Code 153 rezoning regulation, Appendix B, minimum dimension lots, lot width minimum. The property is located at 706 Foster Lane. And who is discussing this? Anybody? Mark?
Brad?
Mark? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. I mentioned this is a request of minor subdivision approval.
Mark, is your mic on?
What's that? I'm sorry. Applicants requesting a minor subdivision approval to complete a property line adjustment on his property, a 706 Foster Lane, for two tracks. The current track, A1, is 2.41 acres, and track two is two acres. Mr. Sanford is requesting that the track be adjusted on the 2.41 acres to two acres, and then track two to go back to 2.4 acres as provided. If this does happen, the track that's going to be a two-acre track, the required frontage on a residential estate is 200, of which this is 152 feet point eight. I don't know, Brad, if you have that flat looking at it. Can you all see that tapping on it? I'm assuming that's the eastern part of that lot, is the 153 when they split that. That's correct. It's on the north, northeast side of there. You know, he's got to look for a hardship, and even though, I think, and Mr. Sanford might come up and discuss exactly, I know he purchased this at one time, and then had determined that they wanted to actually take a little bit more of the property to make it more streamlined. If you look at the top portion of it, it doesn't have kind of a hook on it. And it just kind of straightens things out for him, and so we are recommending the area specifically to reduce the property frontage from 200 to 152.8. I don't think it affects any of the properties surrounding it. So go back to that visual picture. There you go, right there. If I'm gaining it right, so that very right corner is the 153. Where are they splitting? Is that? No, it's shifting. Shifting. That little piece that you see right there, that he's got the arrow on? Yes. That's actually shifting further north, so that actually looks more of a lot that's long and straight across. It's a lot line adjustment is what it is. Do we have the current tracks? The picture of how the current tracks are? And to be clear, track A is currently 2.41, wanting to go to two, and track two is two, and they want to go to 2.41? That's correct. Okay. So that line adjustment that we're seeing pinpoint is actually shifting going north?
The map that you see before you is the current map, and he has brought in a incidental mass survey showing what he wants to do.
Do we have that?
It's in my office.
Essentially, he's adjusting it northward 48 feet, more or less. Is that correct? That's what his request is? In other words, 48 feet reduced off the current 200 feet, so it would be 152.
We're going to try to get the map real quick for you, or the survey.
What are the questions you have? What's the hardship? Well, the hardship is, is that if you're going to do the property line adjustment, that doesn't necessarily give you the ability to add that to 200 feet per area. And I looked at it from a standpoint that it's his property, and it's not really affecting anything around it. Therefore, we would recommend...
And he already has a fence located on the portion of that property.
We got it. May I ask a question? Yes. So forgive me, I was focusing on the other things. What was the answer for what's the hardship? Mark, did you? So we have a precedent. Our regulations are 200 feet. What's required in RE in that zone? Yeah. And every piece of land or track is not going to be completely, be able to split 200 by 200, so you have to sometimes look at those adjustments out there to be able to adjust for what the applicant is looking at. Yeah. So is the 47 foot is a hard burn for somebody? That's what you have to think. Is there, you know, is there a true hardship? Probably not.
For what he's trying, what they're trying to do on that, you'll just have to see if
that affects your viewing of that area that it's in right now. You'll start seeing, you'll start seeing a lot more of these come in, unfortunately. If we, here's my question. If we say yes to this, now we have a precedent. I do not. I see each, each tracks are different. Different? Yes. And everything's not a square. Okay. So you have to look at each track, what's around it, what's beside it, how that affects that piece of it. So does the, does the true 47 feet truly affect this, this land or anything around it on that piece of it? Does it? I mean, I don't see it as a precedence, because I see tracks as different. Okay. Now, I'm not a lawyer either, so precedence is disclaimer. Disclaimer, so. Yes, sir. James?
Trying to figure out what he wants to do with this land, and two, you know, we adhere to codes. There's still no hardship here. There's not a power line, or a water line, or a sewer line that he's having to go around to build a house, so.
Advocate applicant is here if he'd like to address you, or you'd like to ask questions.
If you'd like to come on. State your name and your address, please, sir. Thank you.
Mark Sanford, 311 Romano Avenue, right here. So I bought the first track, which is the one that's kind of funny shape that comes down to the point there. It's exactly 2.0 acres, and bought it with the intention of building a house on it for my family and for us to live on. The other piece came available, and over a long period of time, we kind of worked something out, and I bought it as well. When I bought it, I actually was under the impression that it was, not RE, that it was just, and help me out here, just R. What's the one where you can take it down to just one acre?
R1.
R1. I was under the impression it was R1 when I bought it, and I was, and that, the map doesn't do you much justice, but if, I don't know if we can put that, are we able to put that back up?
Sure.
So if you look on the, it's kind of an L shape. The far, my right-hand side, right there, is, all that's hillside, and then it flattens out up on that top. And so the only place suitable to build a house on it is up on the top. Everything down here is hillside that's just going to be driveway to get up to that top. And my goal with it is to sell off a little piece of it, to take those funds and then use them to build the house. Originally, like I said, I was going to just sell off the top one acre, because I thought it was R1, and give an easement through there and keep the rest of that. The intention was to keep as much property as I could with my house. And then, and then we found out, no, it's actually RE, so it has to be two acres. And so that was, that's why we ended up moving that to that, the new boundary line, is to make that, that minimum of two acres to be able to sell it off, and then take those proceeds and build the house with. And I've got a big horse run, a nice wood three-rail fence all the way around, a big area there with a paddock and everything, that I'd like to keep connected to the front that I'm going to keep. And I've got a little gravel road built so that I can pull a truck and a trailer all the way around it and access it, and just use the property for the highest and best purposes.
So you purchased track one first?
I purchased, no, sir. I purchased this track first, where he's got the cursor over there, and then I purchased the L-shaped track. That's the subject of plans here after that, probably about six or eight months after I purchased the original one.
Can I ask a question about your topo there? So let's say you, there's a house built on the top of that hill. There's a driveway, an opposite roof surface, so there's going to be probably increased, you know, water surface or area, but when it rains, it may come down and drain. Where does that rain at this moment? Where does it go? Does it go to the first group of trees, the second group? Or it looks to me like it kind of stays on that, it goes to the middle and then kind of groups around yours. I mean, I guess what I'm asking that is, any runoff issues that you see may take place? If you have hard surface area on top of that, plus the roof?
Yes, sir.
Now you're going to have runoff. So now that's your neighbor, and then what if it comes into your yard? If we adjust that for you, are you going to complain to him to fix it? You know, I'm just trying to...
Yes, sir.
...mitigating circumstances here.
Absolutely. So it would be impossible for it to run back on to me, because that's kind of the way that hillside works. It would have to go uphill, and it's not going to happen there. But if the northwest corner of that track is a big flat spot at the bottom of the hill that'll catch a lot of that water, because that's where those high line, those big high line guide wires come down and are actually on my property right there now, and they dug all that out, made it a real flat spot at the bottom of that hill, so a lot of that water will drain down the hill and then just kind of hang out in that flat spot, actually staying on the property, would be my best guess.
Question from the gallery. Is that mobile home yours?
No, sir.
That's behind your property?
It's actually to the, you're talking about...
Down Foster. There's a mobile home.
The single mobile home that's behind the house?
Do we have an area?
So the answer to that is no. I don't have a mobile home out there.
Can you go up a satellite view of it?
You give me one.
That's Gina Marie Farms on the east side, right?
Yes, sir. The two pieces...
That's where those mobile homes are, is Gina Marie Farms.
Yes, sir. So my property is in front of Bobby Penalto's house, and then up the side of the hill.
Well, if you're talking about what used to be Gina Marie with the pins, pig pins were, that's owned by a crug now. If it's about a, if you're talking about, it is Gina Marie, 766 Gina Marie. It's actually owned by a guy named Crugs, 11.86 acres.
Ryan. Ryan Crugs. Ryan, he owns what's behind the mobiles and all that back in there. Yes, sir.
Right, okay.
And then there's four, four or five mobiles across the hill there.
Yeah.
Aaron Hall is owns that. And you're, I think you're talking about the camper on the hill?
Okay, so getting, trying to get back on track here just a tad, so...
Oh, yes, yes.
The variance is not particularly going to, I don't see going to, I mean, make that big of a difference on what we're looking at. You know what I'm saying? I'm just trying to get to a water issue in our... I get it, yes. To make sure that's not going to be a problem, surface area of the water runoff, because it's not going to create a problem there with the topos running away, not towards you, and you're not going to come back and go, hey, you can fix it. We don't want, we don't want to argue with you.
No, no, sir. No, you won't get that from me.
It could happen. To the next... We've had it happen.
Yeah, yeah.
So just, you know, you just take responsibility if it does.
Yeah.
You kind of need to take part in your deal or whatever.
Yes, sir. So if you see the corner of the house there where his fence is, go to the left, right there, from there down is all hillside. So, and it kind of crests where the trees are, that one big tree is back, go to the left there, right there, is kind of the hump of the hill, and it falls away that way and falls down that way. And that, right in that area is where I'm planning to build the house, and so it would, it would never run back on me, so as far as me ever complaining, that won't happen.
On your house?
Yeah.
Very good.
Yes, sir.
Now, is that your house that's there now?
No, sir. There's tallies on that, Jake Tally. I just have everything in front of it and everything up beside it.
Tallies in the middle there, Brad.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I know, but that's not the property we're looking at.
Okay, I'm going to ask if we have anything in the public. Anybody out there want to state anything? I'll let you state your piece. Anybody online?
No.
Nobody? Okay. Y'all have any other questions?
You want the property line adjustment, so you can keep as much property as you can to help you build a house for your family.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Very good. Seeing no other questions, I'll ask for roll call, please.
We need a motion and a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Make a motion to approve the Sanford variance.
Second. Motion second. Now we can do roll call.
Okay, Josh?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
James?
No.
Donnie?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Candy?
Yes.
Motion passed.
I am going to adjourn the Board of Zoning. We're going to go right into the Planning Commission meeting. Item number one is the rezone. Applicant is requesting a rezone from agricultural to residential estates, 2.89 acres, located at 443 West Liberty Avenue. Mark, something about you? Okay. This is kind of an interesting scenario. Willard's bought this property, assuming they could build the house on it, and whenever that lot was split off of the original farm, it didn't get rezoned. And so currently, a piece of land is 2.9 acres. It's currently zoned agriculture. Requesting it going to RE. If you look at the future land use, it's commercial neighborhood tradition. There's plenty of water and sewer available to Long Liberty. The areas surrounding it have larger lots. You've got Liberty across the street, you've got the corner doctor's house, all the way down through there is some major larger houses along there, so. And looking at it, it wasn't really his fault buying it and understanding it was still in agriculture. We are recommending that the commission approve the zoning request. Thank you. This time I'll open it up for public comment. Anybody want to comment on this specific item? Not seeing anybody online? No. I will entertain a motion at this point before we discuss.
Motion to approve the rezoning request.
Second.
All right, now motion second. I'll open it up for discussion with the commission. Is the applicant a representative here?
Yes.
Just state your name and address for me. Thank you, sir.
My name is Don Willard. I live at 6630 Firefly Catch Avenue in Springdale.
Thank you, sir. You got form, James?
Mr. Willard, my only question is, is that on our future land use, you know what could possibly go in next to you? That may be to the west cells. You could be looking at apartments, duplexes. Do you understand that? I mean, I took somebody to build a nice home there on 2.9 acres, and then it's happened. Coming into the city council as soon as we approve, or somebody comes through to build duplexes, and then they don't want it because it destroys their view or their way of life.
Okay, what section is, are you referring to, to the east or to the west?
To the west, or to, just what's going to develop in that area in our future land use?
Okay.
I'm not saying that's going to be now, next 10 years, but I'm just saying, you do understand what we're going to be doing with that.
No, I'm not aware of that.
Okay.
So there's a, the land that is owned, I'm not sure who owns it now, but there's a house there now. Currently, you're saying that's not his own residential?
It is, but it could be, somebody could come and ask to rezone like you are, and due to our future map, you know, a developer could come in and say, well, your future map says that we're going to do this transitional, which could be commercial, mixed-use residential, low density. Housing types are varied from single-family duplexes. Some neighborhood scale uses may be included, you know, six to, six to eight units per acre. I mean, I'm just saying.
Okay. So what we do have to look at too, James, is that is future land use, that is not, that is not our current land.
No, I understand that it's not, but it's currently zoned.
That's right. So that's what we have to look at.
I'm just, just saying.
I don't have, I don't have, but maybe a couple decades left to live, so how far down the road that is.
Well, we bought this from Dakin.
He had it perked and decided he needed to go further north, so we, we just assumed it was residential, so we, you know, just, so, you know. And then COVID hit. We pushed pause until, you know, we're trying to do this now, and then we discovered it's agricultural. But I appreciate you sharing that. I had no idea.
Okay. You're welcome. What other questions?
Thanks, James.
Can, can you approach that?
Yeah, you go ahead.
I'm not, not like huge fan of rezoning, and I kind of push back a lot on it, but I don't know why we can't just let him build the house in the ag zoning. Yeah, I know, I know it seems like that, no, 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 but in the past, this stuff has happened, and come to find out, we could let them build after we rezoned it, and it was one elderly lady that I think Danny Montez called on city council, and you voted no, and we all voted yes to rezon. It was an old lady and her son, or...
Kissinger.
Did a one-acre deal. Or was it Kissinger?
Kissinger.
I know that the ag zoning's five-acre minimum, right?
Correct.
Is that not, can he not build with like a conditional use or...
We went, we've already discussed this with Justin, and this was, Justin has told us that he could not do that. We'd have to rezon it. Any, any development that is on the current property with that zone has to meet that zoning requirement, and it does not.
Can you pull up the list of conditional, what's allowed on ag, please?
That was a question that we had, Josh, as well. Could we build? It was a little unclear when we were reading through the information, what exactly, so we didn't, we were advised to go ahead and, our turn to go ahead and get the, try to get it rezoned, just because it was a little bit vague, at least for our understanding, if we could build a house. And would it be limited or, you know?
To be honest with you, it's a little vague to my understanding, too.
Yeah.
Still. So what was the deal with Kissinger? We rezoned it, but we didn't have to, so how, why wouldn't we have had to?
I mean, to my knowledge, I was there at that council meeting, and Justin was there on the, on the seat, and he, he explained the same thing at that time. If he said something different since then, I don't know, but that was what he explained to the whole council. Because I specifically asked that question.
Danny, if you can remember whatever.
While he's looking for that, can you have anything?
No, I don't have a problem with RE. I mean, it's, you have to have two acres. It's really not changing much right there.
And, and at the same time, I mean, this is going, it's going to be RCT, correct?
That's future land use.
That's what it is right now. Right now, I think it's R3. It's just going to go...
Into RE.
Into RE. Yep. Gotcha.
Future land use is a living, breathing document that changes, it's changed while we were on this commission.
Yep.
That's like...
Josh, to your, to your question on the Kissinger...
Please state your name.
Danny Montez, 714 Belmont Way.
Thank you.
What happened on the Kissinger one is she had multiple acres. They were just trying to split off one so that she could build a house. We didn't have to split it.
You're talking about.
Down Foster, there's a mobile home.
The single mobile home that's behind the house?
Do we have an area?
So the answer to that is no. I don't have a mobile home out there.
Can you go up a satellite view of it? That's Gina Marie Farms on the east side, right?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, the two pieces.
That's what those mobile homes are, is Gina Marie.
Yes, sir. So my property is in front of Bobby Penalto's house. And then up the side of the hill.
Well, if you're talking about what used to be Gina Marie with the pins, pig pins were, that's owned by Krug now, if it's about a, if you're talking about, it is Gina Marie, seven, six, six Gina Marie, it's actually owned by a guy named Krug, it's eleven point eight six acres.
Ryan. Ryan, he owns what's behind the mobiles and all that back in there, yes, sir.
Right, okay.
And then there's four mo, four or five mobiles across the hill there.
Yeah.
Aaron, Aaron Hall is owns that. And you're, I think you're talking about the Camber on the hill.
Okay, so getting, trying to get back on track here just a tad, so.
Oh, yes, yes.
The variance is not particularly going to, I don't see going to, I mean, make that big of a difference on what we're looking at, you know what I'm saying?
No, I'm just trying to get to a water issue.
I get it, I get it, yes.
Yeah, to make sure that's not going to be a problem, surface area of the water runoff, because it's not going to create a problem there with the topos running away not towards you, and you're not going to come back and go, hey, you can fix it, we don't want to argue this there with you.
No, no, sir, no, you won't get that from me.
It could happen. To the next.
We've had it happen.
Yeah, yeah.
So just, you know, you just take responsibility if it does. You kind of need to take a part in your deal or whatever.
Yes, sir, so if you see the corner of the house there where his fence is, go to the left, right there, that from, from there down is all hillside, so, and it kind of crest where the trees are, but the one big tree is back, go to the left there, right there, is kind of the hump of the hill, and it falls away that way and falls down that way, and that, right in that area is where I'm planning to build the house, and so it would, it would, it would never run back on me, so as far as me ever complaining, it won't.
On your house?
Yeah, very good. Yes, sir.
Now, is that your house that's there now?
No, sir, there's tallies on that, Jake Tally. I just have everything in front of it and everything up beside it.
Tally's in the middle there, Brad.
Thank you. Okay, I know, but I, that's not the property I'm looking at.
Okay, I'm going to ask them, if we have anything in the public, anybody out there want to state anything, I'll let you state your piece. Anybody online?
No.
Nobody, okay. Y'all have any other questions?
You want the property line adjustment, so you can keep as much property as you can to help you build a house for your family.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Very good. Seeing no other questions, I'll ask for roll call, please.
We need a motion in a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Make the motion to approve the sand for variance.
Second. Motion's second, now we can do roll call.
Okay, Josh?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
James?
No.
Donnie?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Candy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes, very good. I'm going to adjourn the board of zoning, we're going to go right into the planning commission meeting. Item number one is the rezone, applicant requesting a rezone from agricultural to residential estates, two point eight nine acres located at four, four, three, West Liberty. Mark, I'm thinking about you.
I can deal with that.
Okay.
This is kind of an interesting scenario, Willard's bought this property, assuming they could build a, the house on it, and whenever that lot was split off of the original farm, it didn't get rezoned, and so currently, a piece of land is two point nine acres, it's currently zoned agriculture, requesting it going to RE. If you look at the future land use, it's commercial neighborhood tradition, there's plenty of water and sewer available to Long Liberty, the areas surrounding it have larger lots, we've got Liberty across the street, we've got the corner doctor's house, all the way down through there is some major, larger houses along there, so, and looking at it, it wasn't really his fault buying it and understanding it was still an agriculture. We are recommending that the commission approve the zoning request.
Thank you, this time I'll open it up for public comment. Anybody want to comment on this specific item? Not seeing anybody online? No, I will entertain a motion at this point before we discuss.
Motion to approve the rezoning request.
Second. All right, now motion's second, I'll open it up for discussion, please. Is the applicant or representative here?
Yes.
Just state your name and address for me, thank you, sir.
My name is Don Willard, I live at six, six, three, oh, Firefly Catch Avenue in Springville.
Thank you, sir. You got it, James?
Mr. Willard, my only question is, is that on our future land use, you know what could possibly go in next to you, that may into the west cells, you could be looking at apartments, duplexes, do you understand that, I mean, I took somebody to build a nice home there on two point nine acres, and then, and it's happened, come into the city council as soon as we approve, or somebody comes through to build duplexes, and then they don't want it because it destroys their view or their way of life.
Okay, what section is, are you referring to, to the east or to the west?
To the west, or to, just what's going to develop in that area in our future land use?
Okay.
I'm not saying that's going to be now, next ten years, but I'm just saying, you do understand what we're going to be doing with that.
No, I'm not aware of that. So, there's a, the land that is owned, I'm not sure who owns it now, but there was, there's a house there, and currently you're saying that's not zoned residential?
It is, but it could be, somebody could come and ask to rezone like you are, and due to our future map, you know, a developer could come in and say, well, your future map says that we're going to do this transitional, which could be commercial, mixed-use residential, low density, housing types are varied from single-family duplexes, some neighborhood scale uses may be included, you know, six to, six to eight units per acre, I mean, I'm just saying.
Okay, so what we do have to look at too, James, if that is future land use, that is not our current land.
No, I understand that it's not, but it's currently zoned.
So that's what we have to look at.
I'm just, just saying.
I don't have, I don't have, maybe a couple decades left to live, so, how far down the road that is.
Well, yes.
Yeah, when we bought this from Jackine, he'd had it perked and decided he needed to move further north, so we, we just assumed it was residential, so we, you know, just, so, you know, and then COVID hit, we pushed pause until, you know, we're ready to try and do this now, and then we discovered it's agricultural, but I appreciate you sharing that, I had no idea.
Okay. You're welcome. What other questions?
Thanks, James.
Can, any other questions?
Yeah, you go ahead.
I'm not, not like huge fan of rezoning, and I kind of push back a lot on it, but don't know why we can't just let them build the house in the ag zoning. I know, I know it seems like that, no, 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 but in the past, this stuff has happened, and come to find out, we could let them build after we rezoned it, and it was one elderly lady that I think Danny Montez caught on city council, and you voted no, and we all voted yes to rezone, it was the old lady and her son, or did a one acre deal, or was it Kissinger? I know that the ag zoning's five acre minimum, right?
Correct.
Is that not, can he not build with like a conditional use, or?
We went, we've already discussed this with Justin, and this was, Justin has told us that he could not do that, we'd have to rezon it. Any, any development that is on the current property with that zoning, has to meet that zoning requirement, and it does not.
Can you pull up the list of conditional, what's allowed on ag, please?
That was a question that we had, Josh, as well, could we build? It was a little unclear when we were reading through the information, what exactly, so we didn't, we, we were advised to go ahead and, our turn to go ahead and get, try to get it rezoned, because it was a little bit vague, at least for our understanding, if we could build a house. And would it be limited, or, you know?
To be honest with you, it's a little vague to my understanding, too.
Yeah.
Still. So what was the deal with Kissinger? We rezoned it, but we didn't have to, so how, why wouldn't we have had to?
I mean, to my knowledge, I was there at that council meeting, and Justin was there on the, on the seat, and he, he explained the same thing at that time. If he said something different since then, I don't know, but that was what he explained to the whole council. Because I specifically asked that question.
I don't think they had five acres. It was been since Danny Montez, so I can't, if you can remember, whatever.
Why he's looking for that, can you have anything?
No, I, I don't have a problem with RE, I mean, it's, you have to have two acres. It's really not changing much right there.
And, and at the same time, I mean, this is going, it's going to be RCT, correct?
It's future land use, that's what it is right now, right now.
It's just going to go.
Into RE.
Into RE.
Yep.
Gotcha. Future land use is a living, breathing document, it changes, it's changed while we were on this commission, so.
Yep.
That's like.
To your, to your question on the Kissinger.
Please state your name.
Danny Montez, seven, one, four Belmont Way. What happened on the Kissinger one is she had multiple acres, they were just trying to split off one so that she could build a house, we didn't have to split it, it could have stayed all agricultural, never split off that one lot, build the house because it was more than five. And then they just wanted to split that off just for the mother, and then the rest was going to stay farm. This isn't that, I mean.
But they, they probably wouldn't have split that off if they had known they.
Right, but it ended up, I think there was two no's and the rest three yeses, so it did, it passed planning in, it passed in the city council, so, that's kind of the difference here, this one's two point nine versus, I think it was ten acres, and they actually went off to one acre. And so, they could have done it under agricultural because it was.
Bigger than five.
Five, but this one, I think, I think what we're seeing here is the sale of this land that this gentleman purchased is less than five now, so it's agricultural and he can't build it. That's the way I'm understanding it.
Thank you, Danny. Tom, you got what you needed?
I've got it.
Donnie? So, on the north side of Liberty Avenue, that's, that's that new subdivision that's continuing to grow, right?
Liberty Estates, it can't grow anymore, it's outdated.
It's done, okay. I, I sure don't see a problem with, with this. Any other questions? If not, I'll ask for roll call, please.
Okay, this is a motion to approve.
That's correct.
Josh?
No.
Kevin?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Candy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Donnie?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So the motion passes, so this still has to go to city council, sir, before it passes through them, okay? This is just your first step. Okay, next item, item number two is a final plat. I have to come to request a final plat for Deer Valley subdivision with conditions, or excuse me, subdivision, and with conditions located in Washington County within the Tonnytown planning area. This is outside the Lunsford Veterinary, it's been a while on this one, so. Zach's going over this one?
Yeah.
All right, Zach.
Good evening, so before you have the final plat of the Deer Valley subdivision, this is a more rural type subdivision in the west part, so, let me rephrase that, this is a specialty subdivision, it is technically outside of city limits, but in the Tonnytown planning area, right, so we need to keep that in mind tonight. It's a thirty lot subdivision, it's got about a one and a half to two acre lot minimum, it's complete with streets, open drainage, and it will be on Tonnytown water, so this has been reviewed for compliance with Tonnytown water specifications, so, they've reached the end, the project is complete, and now they're asking for a final plat, so if you have any questions, I'd love to answer them.
This time I'll open it up for comments from the citizens, comments. Seen, I don't see anybody online. I will ask for a motion first before we discuss, please.
Motion approved, Deer Valley subdivision final plat with conditions.
Second, and we got a second, okay, I'll open it up for discussion.
Zach, where on the portion of this deals with just the water, correct? The rest of whatever they do is going to be county approved.
That is correct, so this is in, we do get a chance to look at it, we do have to approve it, but the county's going to dictate most of the zoning regulations, so that includes minimum lot size, building setbacks, all that jazz, so, really what we looked at it for in relation to the developer code was to make sure they did comply with our detention requirements, which they have, and also making sure that water main's protected with deisments and was installed per Tonnytown specifications of what it was, so.
Thank you. What other, what other questions, please?
I will add one thing, should you approve this tonight, make sure you do it conditionally, they do have some punch list items on the water main, turn the fire hydrant here, change this valve up a little bit, some, some kind of cleanup items, so we want to make sure those do, are a condition of approval.
He, he did a motion with conditions, and those conditions are in our package, isn't those are, those are on there. Thank you for the, the punch list.
Comment?
Yes, sir.
I was out there, I've seen it, and they, they have done a good job, I am really glad the commission denied a higher density request, because of the steepness and the topography, there is, there's a lot of drainage, but I think that what he's got and the way they did it, it really looks good, it's going to be, it's going to be nice in the rip rap as well as the drainage, I mean, real glad that we said no to the higher density, but it's going to be a really good subdivision, so, thanks, Zach, I commend you.
Thanks, Tom, any other comments?
Tom.
Yes, sir.
I don't like conditions either, a lot, but I don't know why we can't wait for them to turn the fire hydrant, say, when you're ready, you can come, when you're not ready, just wait a minute, like this isn't keeping them from selling lots, or we've got one house built in there, so.
Might not keep them from selling the lot, but building on the lot, but it will keep them from getting a certificate of occupancy to live in the house.
Gotcha.
Yep, so they'll have to.
I was going to say, too, if you held up the final plat, that might actually affect the next phase, which is the home build phase, right, so we're pushing home builders off. It's something we certainly got to look at, and maybe in a more, how should I word this, complex, you know, this one, this one would be fairly typical, I know I've seen this, and I worked on the private side, this would be a very typical practice to say, hey, look, still got to fix, make sure you got, fix the valves and get this meter in the right height before you say it's good to go.
All right.
But the city will come out and, and approve, they can't, as Kevin said, even though we don't go and do an inspection on our house because we're not the city, we can say, you can't move into it until we sign off on.
The water.
The water, correct, and this is a city.
Sure.
Not a county, it's a city.
We could, we could refuse water meters at the end until we make sure this is in compliance, I don't see that happening on this project, this is one of the best punch lists I've seen in a long time, normally they're.
Well, as you know, you used to work for Washington County, correct?
Sure.
In Washington County authority, you cannot start a house without submitting the plans. Then once plans are approved, then they get a water tap.
That's right.
That's correct.
Right.
So, is there anything, is that, do you think that's something we ought to look at doing, is that a better system, or is the way we got our doing?
I think that's certainly open for debate, as to whether or not that, certainly more on the restrictive side compared to other municipalities, as far as the water system's concerned, I think we're more than protected, and at the end of the day, if these punch list items aren't done, we can certainly refuse water services and subventions, so.
Okay, well, you, you have a paradigm of best experience at that hand, so I would go with whatever you would suggest, but I do like that, it's just a matter of, it is a little more restrictive, but at least we know things are in place, but if you've got a system in place, you're the man.
Well, this one's kind of, you know, keep in mind, this is still in the county, right, county's dictating perverts or lack thereof, it's not something we get to say, our, our, only thing we can really do is refuse water meters because it's on Tonnytown water, right?
Washington County water in the county's the same way, though, correct?
Exactly.
No, no different.
No different.
Yeah.
So, kind of similar, we're not that quite restrictive yet, but there's still plenty of oversight, make sure that this gets done right.
Yeah.
So just from my knowledge, how long does the punch list have to be before you say, yeah, you're not ready?
Expert opinion, or at this point?
Your opinion.
Sure.
Expert, yeah.
Or an opinion, so to speak.
Right, I was just curious.
I've seen a lot of them, certain items will affect system function, you know what I'm saying, like, let's say you've got water mains that are below health department minimum depths, that's got to be fixed right now, you know, that's just no go, you got to raise the water meter four inches, it's not really going to, so it's kind of user field based on experience. Again, I'll reiterate, this is probably one of the best punch lists I've done, first walk through, and I've seen a lot of subdivisions, so. Good, thank you.
No promises of road widening, right?
So, roads, roads are, through much conversation with the county, roads will be completely dictated by Washington County, so it's whatever they say go.
Yes, Candy?
I just have a comment, I'm kind of with Josh, and, and this, this does look really good, we've gotten some things before where there were this many conditions.
Sure.
But, and this one does look good, but I'm kind of with Josh, can we keep it, shorter conditions before it comes to us?
We can certainly try, if you look at the code, there's some hard items that have to be completed before final plat, and there's some items that say, hey, you know, you can bond it as it goes through final plat, you know, water system, stuff like this is a bondable item, so, you know, as it stands, this is certainly within our current code, as far as reducing punch list items, we absolutely want to make sure that's as minimum zero as possible, I've never really seen a zero before, but this is about as close as you're going to get first try.
Right, you've never seen a zero because they always come before they digitally grow.
Sure, sure, well, it's not just here, it's across a lot of different cities.
Yeah, I'm digging now, so, thank you.
Anybody else? If not, I will ask for a roll call on approving the final plat with conditions on Deer Valley.
Tom?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Donnie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Candy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Just to reiterate, the rezone for the Liberty, four, forty-three West Liberty, that will go to the planning commission.
City council?
I say that every time because I'm looking at planning commission, it will, since we approved it, it will go to the city council for their review and decision. This time I will open it up, y'all have any questions on the building activity report? Or the current planning projects report? There's two of them over there. Not seeing any, Brad, do you have any comments?
No, one of the, I know, last Tuesday was a rough day for our computers, we are getting everything updated, and thank you for your patience tonight, but we should next week be flowing a little bit better, so thank you for your patience.
Thank you, sir. Mark? No, I don't have anything. Candy?
No comments.
No comments. Tom?
Things are moving well in the city of Tonnytown, and at least in terms of people coming and looking, and looking and putting their businesses here, I'm, I have the privilege of, you know, being in that sector, and, you know, I'm encouraged for what I am experiencing, and I think Tonnytown is going to have a good year.
Donnie? As I think about Deer Valley, it, it makes me wonder with the proximity and, and what that's going to contribute in just the area, I wonder, I wonder if we should be talking to an owner of something like that about annexation, annexing a piece of property like that into, into the city limits, before, before we would have to deal with separate property owners, the property owner of the seventy plus acres could make a lot better decision on that, just, just a thought, that's all I have. James?
I have no comment.
Josh?
Quote, don't find fault, find a remedy, anybody can complain, Henry Ford.
Just a few things, we are going to start looking at, we've already started looking at a few items on some codes for section one fifty-two and one fifty-three. I have been working with staff, we're going to assign each commission a section of these codes for you to review, and then which staff member you can get with to, with your comments or changes that you'd like to see, then we'll come together on these and put together a better plan on some of these codes, because they are kind of old and probably need to be relooked at, so within the next few days, we'll get that out to each of us, which sections I'm going to, we're going to assign you, and then I would ask to look through, there's not a whole lot for you to look at, but there's some, and look at that diligently and get with the staff member and make sure we get some comments back on these stuff, and some of those comments will be what we've talked about tonight, so I mean, it'll be, it'll be some good, some good information, and some changes that need to be had. Other than that, I think that is, yeah, thanks, thanks everybody for coming, thanks for coming out tonight, and at that, I want to ask for adjournment for tonight's commission. One favor?
Hello, there you are.
Good job, ladies.
Ended just in time. I know. I told him I said my platter's only good for like forty-five minutes per hour.
I was asking about the minimum of the ag, I said, you know, with the vertical, I think if I revisited what the minimum of ag is because of. You could say, well, if you want a buck farm or a tree farm, or do you want a, you know, a vertical farm that grows plants, you know, or a flower farm.
Yeah, yeah.
And there's something about this, I think, maybe move it to a self-sufficiency sort of economy where people want to plant, maybe they have a little local farm, and this would be a complementary, I think, I think it would fit the Tonnytown deal, but I kind of think we ought to, we might want to think about that as we, if we look at some of these codes, because apparently somebody got denied, they wanted a one acre, two acre flower farm, and that's just emotional, we could say, well, if you want a vegetable or a. And that would be a different kind of lifestyle.